Good afternoon, everyone. It is 3 o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order and bring your attention to the good luck jerseys at the front of the room here. I think you all know what all this is about. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we'd like to extend a heartfelt welcome to all of you who have joined us both in person and virtually for our April 30th, 2025. Hard to believe that we're already in April. We're pleased to acknowledge that trustee Debbie Engel, who is joining us remotely today, and we're equally delighted to celebrate and acknowledge special guests, principals and assistant principals, who are either joining us for a special recognition or simply to support the board at today's public board meeting, beginning with Makayla. Makayla, and you know what? And she taught me how to say her name. She said Makayla, and I thought, oh, she's a teacher, right? Because she's giving me all those cues that I need in order to say it right. So Makayla, man, our very proud Edwin Parr recipient from St. Elizabeth Elementary School. Also from St. Elizabeth, we have Principal Christie Demaree, Makayla's principal. From St. Timothy, Principal Joanna Shipper. And from St. Philip, Principal Maria DeBolt. Welcome to all of you. From our ATAs, I know our ATAs always here. Yep, thank you very much. Vice President Owen Holloway, thank you for being here. And of course, to our Division Lumen Christie staff, senior leadership, and any other division staff and guests, welcome. A special welcome to all of you. And as a community of faith, we'll open our meeting with 1.1 opening prayer, and it gives us great joy to call upon Father Glenn.
Hello, everyone. Madam Chair. Let us begin in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
A reading from the Holy Gospel according to John. Glory to you, oh Lord. Jesus said to Nicodemus, "God so loved the world that he gave his only Son, so that everyone who believes in him may not perish but may have eternal life." Indeed, God did not send the Son into the world to condemn the world, but in order that the world might be saved through him. Those who believe in him are not condemned, but those who do not believe are condemned already because they have not believed in the name of the only Son of God. And this is the judgment, that the light has come into the world and people love darkness rather than light because their deeds were evil. For all who do evil hate the light and do not come to the light, so that their deeds may be, may not be exposed. But those who do what is true come to the light, so that it may be clearly seen that their deeds have been done in God. The Gospel of the Lord. Praise to you, Lord Jesus Christ. Some of my friends, for today's gospel reading reminds me so much of the imagery of the Sacred Heart of Jesus, in particular of the, very often when it is depicted with a, so it's like a heart with a crown of thorns, a pound it, is also like a radiant light that emanates from it. And this is the light of Jesus' love and truth that we are entrusted with to share with the young people, that families have given to us to care for. And so it, we always have kind of a, like a two-fold mission to, is part of our work with ECSD of like, we teach the truth of, of the gospel and the teach of the truth of creation that God has revealed through science and literature and all the beautiful subjects that we get to teach, but at the same time, we must teach that light as a light of love. Because knowledge by itself can go many ways, but it is the love of Jesus that helps us to know which way to, to follow. And that radiant light draws us all to our greater calling to be baptized Christians who live in the light and share that love with one another. It is a beautiful vocation to have, tricky one at the times, you know? It can be hard in times of feeling of darkness or trial or difficulty or opposition or frustration, but the heart of Jesus beats with great love for all of us, and he promises to strengthen us in this beautiful mission of learning and love. And so let us ask for the Sacred Heart to be with all of us in our work. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Father Glenn. On behalf of the board, as per usual, we express our gratitude for today's prayer and reflection, as well as for your guidance, inspiration, and faith leadership, and for always being a champion of hope for Edmonton Catholic Schools. Thank you. We will now move on to 1.2, an alternate to trustee Mutala to please read the land acknowledgement. Trustee Mutala, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of Treaty VI and homeland of the Metis. We also acknowledge the Inuit and other diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors have marked as territories for century, a place that has welcomed many people from around the world to make their home here. We at Edmonton Catholic Schools commit to restoring and honoring the truth and reconciliation calls to action. We strongly believe that truth must be acknowledged to move forward to reconciliation. Together, we call upon all our collective communities to build a stronger understanding of all peoples who dwell on this land we call home.
Thank you very much, trustee Mutala. Next on the agenda is 1.3, and we'll note for the record that all trustees are present, with trustee Engel joining us virtually today. We will now move on to 1.4, approval of the agenda and alternate to, trustee Mutala, you're back in queue, go ahead, please, to make this motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the agenda for today's meeting, April 30th, 2025.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in queue, we will call the vote. Thank you. I'm just waiting for trustee Engel. John? Trustee Engel, are you on? If you could please vote for the agenda, acceptance of the agenda, yes or no? Is she on, John?
Yeah, she's on. Do you want me to bring her up?
It's not turning up on my end. Okay, let's, oh, there she is. Okay.
I am really trying to vote. I hit yes and confirm vote. I'm not sure what's happening.
Okay, could we maybe, we'll, we'll do a revote, if we may. So just asking everyone to revote, please. Oh, there we go. Technology. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, trustee Engel. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that as the motion to approve today's agenda as circulated is approved, consent 1.4.1.1, 2026-2027, Division, School Year and Year Round School Year calendars, and all recommendations contained therein have also been approved. We'll now move on to approval of the minutes, 1.5.1, and I'll turn it to trustee Taber, please, to go ahead and make this motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting, March 19th, 2025.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no one else in queue, we will once again call the vote. There we go. Thank you very much. As all trustees are in favor, the motion is carried, and we'll note for the record that the regular board meeting minutes of March 19th, 2025 is also carried. So thank you for that. And moving on to 1.5.2, as there are no matters arising from the minutes, we'll move on to 1.6, King Charles III Coronation Medal, and I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Tuchansky.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The King Charles III Coronation Medal commemorates His Majesty King Charles III's coronation, which took place on May 7th, 2023. The medal is awarded to deserving individuals who have made significant contributions to Canada or a particular province, territory, region, or community in Canada, or attained an outstanding achievement abroad that brings credit to Canada. Are you flipping through your notes while I'm reading this? I am honored to share that Board Chair Sandra Palazzo has been awarded the King Charles III Coronation Medal. An excerpt from her citation reads as follows. Sandra has been awarded the King Charles III Coronation Medal in recognition of her outstanding service and citizenship. She is also a recipient of the Queen's Jubilee Medal, a further testament to her longstanding commitment to public service. Now, in her fifth term as Board Chair, Sandra's leadership is grounded in over 40 years of dedication to education, beginning as a teacher with Edmonton Catholic Schools in 1986. Her professional journey has included roles as department head, administrator, and senior manager with Alberta Ed, experiences that have shaped her deep understanding of the education system and her unwavering advocacy for Catholic education. In addition to her service through the Board of Trustees on the Governance, Community Engagement, and Audit and Finance Committee, Sandra has made a lasting impression through her volunteer work, chairing numerous community committees and events. Her tireless commitment to students, families, and the broader community continues to inspire and guide her work as trustee for the Board of Trustees. And the fact that she was nominated by our education minister specifically is particularly telling. She was in some extraordinary company, and I was honored to be there. And to see the people that you received your award with was, was truly extraordinary. And I was honored to be there with your daughter. So thank you for that. So it is my recommendation that the Board of Trustees recognizes and celebrates our Board Chair Sandra Palazzo for being awarded the King Charles III Coronation Medal. Yay! Now, can we get a picture? Is that okay in front here?
She doesn't ask for much, does she?
Well, I just, why not? I'm running this one minute of the meeting.
All of us. Sorry, Chair. Have to be in the middle. There we go. There we go. Ooh. Smile, please. One more. Big smile over there. And one more. Thank you. And I'm expected to continue chairing after this? So I am going to share a few words. Boy, it's tough to sit up here and hear all of that. I didn't quite know how to react, and I started shuffling my papers. My apologies. I don't know if I'm still a little bit red there, but wow. To say thank you and to say that I'm honored and humbled for this recognition, especially from a board that I very much admire and have the deepest respect for, is truly, truly an honor. And for it to come to our public board meeting is an understatement, to say the least. This is a privilege, and it's a privilege because the fact, and vice chair Tuchansky already shared this, being a recipient with so many deserving individuals, one of whom is a colleague, and so trustee Engel isn't here today, but I'm certain that she can hear what I'm saying here, it, it's an honor. But to be recognized for service that you love because of the efforts of so many significant others, walking on your journey with you is truly, truly a blessing. The fact is that, there's an expression that they say, working hard for something we don't care about is called stress, but working hard for something that we love is passion. And so to be recognized for something that, that I have so much passionate for, that we as a collective are so passionate about, makes it that much more impactful, and you're making me emotional here. But the truth of the matter is that awards are never solely received on the merit of the recipient. The truth is that I've mentioned, as I've mentioned before, it's because of the impact of so many people in my life that I'm here today. And in my case, our board, my colleagues, community members, and so many others who have shared their gifts and mentorship with me. Being critical doesn't get us anywhere, but doing the work that we love for the right reasons truly, truly makes it heartfelt. And it is with unending gratitude that I share how honored I am to be, to receive the, to receive recognition from a board that I respect and admire here. This recognition is as much yours as it is mine, and I'm proud to share it with each of you and to thank you for elevating the work that we do because, in the end, it's about the kids. And that's what we have to remember. It's about the kids and why we're here. Because as we all know, it takes a village. It takes a strong village. And so to my ECSD family, both today and in the past, thank you. Thank you to my colleagues, and thank you for your steadfast uplifting support and guidance and bracing me with your infectious passion. Thank you. Once again, I am honored, and that's it. And of course, my board, my colleagues are in queue, and so I have to do the board chair thing now, so I'm finished. Trustee Engel, you are first in queue. Go ahead, please.
Well, today it's both an honor and a joy to recognize our chairperson, Sandra Palazzo, on being recognized and awarded the King Charles III Coronation Medal. Sandra, this recognition is so well-deserved. It comes as no surprise to any of us who have had the privilege of working alongside you. You are a remarkable woman, intelligent, capable, and deeply committed to the cause of education. You have given so much of your life to serving students, families, and communities, and you do so with grace, dignity, and unwavering dedication. You lead with compassion. You are always ready to lend a helping hand, to listen, to encourage, to lift others up. You represent our board with excellence and integrity, and your leadership is not only effective, it is inspiring. Beyond your work here, you are known and respected throughout the community, not just for your contributions to education, but for your generosity as a volunteer and your willingness to serve wherever you are needed. You are an exceptional communicator, a thoughtful listener, and someone who genuinely cares for each of us, your colleagues on the board. Sandra, you embody the very best of what it means to be a leader. We are so darn proud of you, and we celebrate this well-earned honor with deep admiration and gratitude. Thank you for being who you are.
Thank you very much, trustee Engel. I will move it on, I will move along to trustee Mutala.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Engel. I can't say too much more after all that. I just want to say congratulations, Sandra. I have known you for eight years altogether, and I am so grateful to be your friend, and I'm so grateful that you're our board chair, and you really deserve this medal because you are dedicated and you have always been there for Catholic education. And everywhere we go, we meet, run into people that you have taught. Everywhere we go, we know that, and we are just blessed to have you as our board chair.
Even the ones that have 25 and 30 and 35 years on, on their tag.
So thank you very much.
Trustee Taber, you're next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, you wear so many hats, okay? Like trustee Mutala said, former educator, literally you cannot go anywhere with this woman because you will be stopped, and somebody, somewhere will come up to her and will mention either how they know her, or it's, it's just phenomenal. So I challenge you to go somewhere with this girl. Community advocate, again, so many things that you are so passionate about, and so many, so unlike dot, 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 because there's too many to mention. We're not going to go there. And you mean so many, so much to so many people in so many different ways. But, yeah, it just, you know, I want to thank you. And I'm going to stop there.
I love it when you shed tears, but today they were for me, and I love you. Next in queue is trustee Harris. Go ahead, please.
Well, Madam Chair, Sandra, it is actually, it's such a pleasure to, pleasure and a privilege to work with you. Trustee Mutala mentioned that we've known each other now for eight years since the beginning of our trusteeship, and one thing that really struck me was, at the beginning of our time together, because so many of us were new, we had an opportunity, it was set up at the time where we had an opportunity to go around to all the schools, so as a board, as a full board, or as many of us could make it. So we had an opportunity to visit, I think, every couple of weeks, we were off to about three or four schools, and it was amazing sort of to see the reaction for Sandra around those schools. It was deep affection right across the, right across the division, people who knew her from her past lives as a teacher, as a, as a student, as a department head, as a, as an administrator. And we've seen that, we've seen that level of commitment, that level of affection, obviously demonstrated as well throughout, throughout this entire term. Trustee Engel mentioned that your grace, your dignity, absolutely, we witnessed that. Beyond that as well, your effectiveness. You are a very effective trustee. You are a very effective chair, a very effective citizen of our community, and, and a very effective advocate. And it's always done with grace and dignity and with deep respect, so that we're not setting anybody offside, you know, with comments. It's always done with coming from a open heart with, with great respect. So I just want to express deepest appreciation for all that you contribute to our community. This comes as no surprise. You are a remarkable human being, and, and I'm, I've been delighted to serve with you, and I'm very hopeful that, that you will have many more years ahead of you serving our division and our amazing students and our beautiful staff and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, yes, okay, this is really tough. I know vice chair Tuchansky, but she brought forward so.
Oh, yeah, you got to go to the boss.
She's superintendent Anderson.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. On behalf of EC administration, first of all, congratulations, well, so well-deserved. Just really want to express our deepest appreciation and gratitude for your support and dedication to our division. What I see is, is a lot of passion and commitment to our students, staff, to our families. And when I accompany you at several events throughout the year, what I notice is that you deeply care about Catholic education, preserving, promoting, protecting, and that I see wherever we go. And, and I've learned a lot from you, and just really want to express congratulations and thank you for, for all that you do.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Tuchansky, oh my, pardon me, you have to put yourself back in queue. I got so nervous, I deleted you. Go ahead, please.
I feel spiteful right now. So Edmonton Catholic has had a history of really great board chairs, and of course, you are no exception. And it is, of course, was with what's such pride that you, I was able to read the recommendation. Courtney helped me out a great deal with it, and so thank you very much for that. But she, she had such joy. The minute she heard you won, she could hardly wait to write this up for you. And it was almost insulting because it felt like she knew I couldn't do the job that I wanted to do. So I was grateful for that, but it, it turned out much better. But you are without a doubt extraordinary. Your advocacy is strong, no matter where we go or who we are with. You spoke, Lynette, of her being a true champion of Catholic education, and that is absolutely the case, no matter where we go. You are an extraordinary partner in crime. You let me do what I need to do and then pull me back when I've gone too far, and I enjoy all of that, and would love to be vice, vice chair as long as you are chair. And you are often the practical voice in the room. I tend to scatter myself all over the place and want to be everything, and, and you bring me and the rest of us back when, when we need to. But the thing that just astounds me the most is your pride, your pride in your family, whenever we go with them or see them. You are so proud of, of your children, your husband, and that is just joyful to see, but also of the division and the teachers and the students and the staff, everybody in this building and in all of our buildings, it's like they're your own children. And we're fortunate as your colleagues because we also are covered under that same umbrella. So it is truly joyful to go anywhere with you and to be walking on the journey of trustee with you and you as our board chair. So I am just grateful for all you do for, for us, for the division, and of course, all of our students. So congratulations again, it is such joyful news.
Thank you very much. So we need to stop, but I do have to say something, and not about me. So while you've heard, everything you've heard here today is a reflection of who my colleagues are. And so you're only as great as the people in your life and the people who serve with you. And so I'm just going to give you a little example. The last couple of nights, on Monday night, we celebrated long service, our long service awards, and we had the opportunity of going on stage, and I'm not kidding you, no word of a lie, recipients who were being recognized for 10, right up to 45 years, came up on the stage, and they literally, if they weren't pounding or hugging, or, and they did it to the entire board. And that to me, to witness that, because I've spent close to 40 years with Edmonton Catholic, and Edmonton Catholic is the kind of division where they're all in. They love, and they're passionate, and it's from our kids, to our staff, to our families. And so to see that kind of a reaction for our board truly, truly is an honor for me. It was a joyous, a very joyous celebratory evening, only to be followed by last night, and we were at Celebration of the Arts. And we were able to celebrate with all of our very gifted students, students who were able to showcase their God-given talents. And again, another celebratory evening where this board is there for the kids. They're there for the families and for the staff. And if there's, there's no event that this board, unless at another event, that they're not in attendance of, and I know that on social media, that's pretty, pretty obvious. And so from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for being on this wonderful journey with me and for being individuals without personal agendas, but you're here for the reason that matters, and that's Catholic education, our students, and all the best for Edmonton Catholic Schools. So thank you. Thank you so much. And so, okay, we're done now? Okay, thank you. We will now move on to 1.7, and this one, this is a very, very deserving member and why we're here, a very deserving member of our ECSD Village under 1.7, Edwin Parr Award recipient, Makayla Mann. And we'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson. I can speak clearly again.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And so we have Superintendent Kennard here today to share some exciting news about this year's Edwin Parr Award winner. Over to you, Superintendent Kennard.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson. Alberta School Boards Association Edwin, Edwin Parr Teacher Award recognizes excellent first-year teachers across the province. ASBA encourages each school board to participate in the process, leading to the selection of the 2024 ASBA Edwin Parr Teacher Award winner. This is the opportunity for principals to recognize a beginning teacher who demonstrates outstanding skills and performance in their initial year. Each school division may nominate one candidate. To assist us in this, principals are asked to nominate a maximum of one candidate from their school. Of the four nominations received, the interview committee, consisting of two Edmonton Catholic Schools leaders, nominated Makayla Mann from St. Elizabeth And so from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for being on this wonderful journey with me and for being individuals without personal agendas, but you're here for the reason that matters. And that's Catholic education, our students, and all the best for Edmonton Catholic Schools. So thank you. Thank you so much. And so can, okay, we're done now. Okay, thank you. We will now move on to 1.7. And this one, this is a very, very deserving member and why we're here. A very deserving member of our ECSD Village under 1.7 Edwin Parr Award recipient, Makayla Mann. And we'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson. I can speak clearly again.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, and so we have Superintendent Kennard here today to, uh, share some exciting news about this year's Edwin Parr Award winner. Over to you Superintendent Kennard.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson. Alberta School Boards Association Edwin, Edwin Parr Teacher Award recognizes excellent first-year teachers across the province. ASBA encourages each school board to participate in the process, leading to the selection of the 2024 ASBA Edwin Parr Teacher Award winner. This is the opportunity for principals to recognize a beginning teacher who demonstrates outstanding skills and performance in their initial year. Each school division may nominate one candidate. To assist us in this, principals are asked to nominate a maximum of one candidate from their school. Of the four nominations received, the interview committee consisting of two Edmonton Catholic Schools leaders nominated Makayla Mann from St. Elizabeth Elementary School. Selection criteria for the division this year included principal summary remarks, teacher professional performance evaluation, and an interview with the selection panel. The teacher professional performance evaluation and the interview all align with the Alberta teacher quality standards. School board nominees are forwarded to the zone chair. Each zone then selects a recipient of the award. Zone 23, which includes ECSD, will select two recipients due to the amalgamation of zones 2 and 3. In total, six Edwin Parr Teacher Awards are distributed and recognized at a provincial level by ASBA at its fall general meeting. Each recipient will receive a framed certificate and a gift from ASBA. Now a little bit about Makayla. Makayla Mann graduated from the University of Alberta with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science and History in 2011, and from St. Paul University with a Master of Arts in Conflict Studies in 2013. She then received her Bachelor of Education degree in elementary education in 2024 from the University of Alberta. She's been teaching at St. Elizabeth Elementary School since August of 2024. Upon securing a probationary position, Makayla will be able to receive a continuous contract with the division, conditional, conditional upon meeting our religion course and pastoral reference requirements. In her summary remarks, Principal Christie Demaree of St. Elizabeth School describes Makayla, Makayla, sorry, Mann as follows. Ms. Mann presents herself in a very professional, yet approachable and relatable way with her students, and has provided extremely innovative learning opportunities for her students to allow them various differentiated approaches to their learning, as well as opportunities to shine as leaders within the school through the leadership team she's developed. Ms. Mann has clearly demonstrated that she has an in-depth understanding of how to create innovative learning opportunities that reach all her learners, allowing them to succeed and have a strong sense of belonging within her classroom and the school community. Makayla recently shared that she was honored to receive this nomination, writing, "I am so humbled to have been nominated and selected by the division for the Edwin Parr Award nomination. As it is for all teachers, my first year was a challenge of relationship building, learning and teaching curriculum, navigating new systems, and adapting to surprises every day. This award reassures me that despite challenges, my efforts are valued. It affirms that I am on the right path and encourages me to continue growing as an educator. Makayla has consistently demonstrated exceptional teaching abilities, cultivating a learning environment grounded in fairness, respect, dignity, and inclusion." I'll now hand it back to Chief Superintendent Anderson to read the recommendation.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Kennard. And, and Makayla, what, what I picked up in that, um, description is that you have certainly created a, a community of, of belonging in your classroom and, and we strive for that, that you cultivate a learning environment grounded in fairness and respect and integrity. Those are amazing things to accomplish at any time and especially in your first year, knowing that it is a steep learning curve. So congratulations to you. Um, Madam Chair, our recommendation is that the Board of Trustees recognizes and celebrates Makayla Mann as Edmonton Catholic Schools 2025 Edwin Parr Award recipient. Congratulations.
Okay, and this is a double wow. Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Kennard. Principal Demaree, thank you. Um, where do I start? First, I'm going to start to, in thanking our division for bringing forward this endorsement. Principal Demaree, thank you. But before I go on to share how extraordinary you are, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what happened when you walked in today. I've been in the classroom for over 40 years and you came in today and you have this look of sincerity and humility and integrity. And as a parent, I would want you to teach my child. That says it all. As a future, a, a, a wannabe future grandmother, not there yet, I would want you to be the teacher of my grandchildren. That says it all. You, I could see you going into a classroom and embracing these children. And you know, when we have those pictures of Jesus and he has all of the children around him, doesn't push them away. He brings them closer. I could see that. I saw that in you. And the minute I laid eyes on you and your, your, you have kindness in your eyes. That says it all. Give me someone like you who knows half of the knowledge, but you have the knowledge too, and I would rather take you. And I want to thank you. I want to thank you for making me proud to be a teacher, an educator with Edmonton Catholic. I want to thank you for making me proud of being the board chair of Edmonton Catholic Schools. And I want to thank you for making me proud and giving me the opportunity to sit here and saying thank you to someone who deserves so much more than that. To capture how extraordinary and remarkable you are is difficult to do. But according to the excerpt that's been provided here, you were even honest there. And you said, "It's been challenging," right? And I thought, "Good for you," because it's honest. And honesty is when it's pure. And when you have some, you're willing to learn and you're saying, you know, like, "I see there's so much in relationship building," and you're right. I've taught thousands of students over the years and I am where I am today because of that relationship building that happened with them. I wasn't there to tell them what was wrong. I was tell them, I was there to tell them how to help make it right. Big difference. And you've learned that in your first year. It took me close to 40. So my dearest Makayla, 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 because, right? I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to open it up to the rest of the board, and I'm not quite finished with you yet. But, uh, I'm going to allow them, uh, to say the beautiful, wonderful things that you deserve to hear. And first in queue is trustee Taber. Go ahead, trustee Taber.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Makayla, um, I have witnessed, um, what a first-year teacher has to do. From walking in to that first day to an empty classroom with desks piled in the middle. And from that, you have to, um, create out of nothing this warm, welcoming environment that supports each and every student. And, and that alone is a challenge because everybody has different needs, different successes, different, different things that they need to succeed. And, you know, you have to get to know them. And when you're also learning that and you're learning the curriculum and you're learning what is expected and you're learning, um, parents and the community, it all comes to you first year. And to take that and to, and evaluations, that's another thing. You know, all of a sudden, you know, you've got the stress of evaluations or passion, I think, as our chair called it at the beginning of the meeting. That's stress, it's passion. And all while dealing with the day-to-day things, your successes, your challenges. But I just want to say that I'm thrilled that the province, the division, St. Elizabeth, Ward 77, because you're my ward, is all honored to recognize you for your warm and welcoming, just you. And, um, and for you teaching Catholic education to our students. That's just incredible. So congratulations, and I know the challenges that you've gone through. Congratulations.
Beautifully said. Thank you very much, trustee Taber. Next in queue is trustee Metalla. Go ahead, please.
And thank you to my colleagues because they've said a lot of wonderful things. I, I'm a former teacher too, so I know the challenges of a first-year teacher. And I know how hard it is when you have to know 25 kids and get in there on the first day and set everything up and make sure everything's perfect. But you, 32? Okay, 32 kids, okay. So the thing is, you have been there for them. You've been building relationships with your students and staff for the whole year and your principal has recognized that and so has your staff. We are so grateful that you are there teaching our students and we are blessed to have you. And I will be happy to be with you at Zone 23 to celebrate with you and in the fall at ASBA. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, trustee Metalla. I'm going to be there too. Uh, next in queue is trustee Engel. Um, we'll just give you a minute to come on.
Hello. I'm really, I'm really sor- I'm really sorry I wasn't there to meet you in person, Makayla. But as the chairperson Palazzo mentioned, um, I could see your warm interaction with everyone as you met them and they came in the room, supported by your wonderful principal, who we thank for bringing your name forward. And I just want to say that, um, I, I have a long history and family of teachers, so I've watched a lot of first-year teachers. And teaching is never easy and that first year is often the most challenging. Yet you have met it with strength, heart, and an inspiring commitment to your students. It was just great hearing Superintendent Kennard tell us about you and your classroom. Among all the incredible first-year teachers in our district, it is something very special to be recognized in this way. We are so grateful that you chose to begin your teaching, joining with the Edmonton Catholic family. Thank you for your energy, care, and the excellence you bring to your classroom every day. Congratulations. You are so deserving of this honor and this award. And I'm looking forward to checking up and, um, having the privilege of coming to meet you in person at some time in the future. Again, thank you, Makayla. You have no idea at this young age, the incredible difference you're making in so many lives.
Thank you very much, trustee Engel. We sure know that you come from a family of teachers. Vice Chair Tchatchansky, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, don't you wish you had the papers that Chair Palazzo had that you could shuffle through while we all say this? So every year we see the Edwin Parr winners and they're extraordinary. And every time we know what they do, we think they cannot possibly get any better or any different or serve our division with any more joy and pride. And yet, here you are with, with such joy and humility and, and our chair said it best, and so I won't repeat it because she took all of our sayings. But you truly do. Your, your face is, is so welcoming and joyful and, and I too actually wish you were my teacher and my kids' teachers. Like, I certainly would have gotten in a lot less trouble had you been my teacher. I'm quite certain of it. But what struck me in the whole thing is, is the ability that you have to innovate for your students because that's critical for us. Our students and our learners are no longer walking down the middle of the road. And it's not easy being a teacher or an educator or anybody, quite frankly, in our classroom these days. So the fact that you take the time to be innovative and find ways and strategies to teach these kids and help them learn and be the best that they can be is what strikes me the most. I think that is extraordinary because that is a gift that you can't teach. You either have it or you don't. And the fact that you're willing to just do that and not ask your students to acquiesce and learn one way and, and your way. So, so of all of the things, that struck me the greatest and for me truly is the greatest gift to our students. And we're so grateful that you are in our division with our families and with our students. And I hope I'm on the board for a long, long time to continue to see you grow and flourish and be ahead of us for a few more celebratory moments. Congratulations.
Beautifully said. Thank you very much, Vice Chair Tchatchansky. Trustee Harris, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Makayla, God calls us each by name. This was the theme of our division a few years ago. God calls us each by name. I want to express deep appreciation to you and thanks for answering that call and, and for embracing that calling. I saw from the background, you know, the, uh, your zest for lifelong learning, your zest as a learner. And, um, this is a great organization because this organization is full of people who have a zest for lifelong learning. And you have, you have so much that you can share and you have so much that you can learn. Imagine the opportunities that lay ahead. It's amazing. Um, I do also want to express deep appreciation to Principal Demaree for bringing your name forward. This is a very important part of the role, right, is recognizing talent, celebrating that talent and, uh, bringing that talent to the attention of others. So thank you so much, Principal Demaree. I very much appreciate you doing that. Makayla, you're going to be, over the course of the next career, this is the beauty of, uh, of being a teacher, is it's a career. It's not a job, right? It's a calling. Over the course of the next many years, you'll have an opportunity to touch so, so many lives and you've had a great start. And, uh, uh, like our chair and, and like others on this board who, who have answered that call as well to, and also our administration to be, uh, to, to be teachers, to carry forward in that, in that vocation and, and really elevate the whole. You're going to have all kinds of opportunities. A phenomenal platform for having a very positive impact on the lives of these beautiful children, of your colleagues, of our division. So I want to express deep thanks to you. God bless you.
Thank you very much, trustee Harris. See, the great thing about being chair is I get the last word. That being said, I've already started off with telling you you're extraordinary, but there's just, in listening to my colleagues, there's just a couple more things that I want to leave you with. Only you, a young teacher who is showing the wisdom of someone who has been teaching much longer than that, or maybe it's just ingrained, or maybe it's just because that's who teachers are, true teachers. I want to share with you that only you know your reality. There's a lot of people out there who don't know what today's reality is. You have 32 little ones in there. And of those 32 little ones, I'm confident because I've been in the schools of the complexity that you have to deal with. So when I went in as a parent, I only looked at my child and my child's needs. And yeah, you know what? I was a teacher and I understood that there were 30 others, but it was my child. And that's what a lot of people forget. We go in and we forget that there's, you're, you need to make a difference for all 32. And those 32, all of those 32, all have different needs. And if you're a true Catholic educator, you're going to do what you have to do to ensure their well-being. And I see it in you. And I can only imagine where you're going to go. And I hope that one day you concede, you consider moving on to leadership opportunities because I can see through what you represent, the kind of mentor that you can be for future teachers. So with that, I have more and more and more to say, but I think that it's probably time for you to be able to breathe. That being said, the words that you have shared with us in your excerpt have resonated. Over thousands of first-year teachers, you're a winner. But you were a winner even before you came to Edmonton Catholic. You've just blessed us with your presence and for that, we thank you. And so it gives me great pride and honor to read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees recognizes and celebrates Makayla Mann as Edmonton Catholic Schools 2025 Edwin Parr Award recipient. Congratulations. We're blessed. Thank you. And we, we will now move on to 1.8. And while we're always joyful to share good news stories, we're also committed in coming together when we lose one of our ECSD family members, which takes us to 1.8 on the agenda. Bereavement 1.8.1, Death of Richard Kozinski, and over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We were saddened to hear about the death of one of our staff members. And at this time, I invite Superintendent Kennard to speak on behalf of administration.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson. We regret to advise the Board of the death of Richard Kozinski on February 28th of 2025. Richard was a head custodian within our division and began his career with Edmonton Catholic Schools in February of 1986 and dedicated 39 years of service to our school communities with kindness and dedication. For the past 70, 17 years, he was an integral staff member of Enunciation Catholic Elementary School, where he built lasting relationships with students, staff, and families. His warm smile, willingness to help, and the stories he shared brought joy and connection to everyone around him. A school is more than just a building. It is a community and Richard helped shape that community every day. He cared deeply for the people within it, ensuring the school was not only a clean and safe environment, but also a welcome space where everyone felt welcomed. We extend our deepest condolences to Richard's family and all who were fortunate enough to know him and work with him. Please keep them in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time as we remember and honor the profound impact Richard had within our school communities. Richard is lovingly remembered by his wife, Carol Sulima, his daughter. his daughter Catherine Kozinski and her fiance Daliso, his son Mark Duse and Laura, his son Nicholas Sholotuk and Deb, and his son Andrew Sholotuk and Brianna. Richard was a proud grandfather to Georgia, Liliana, Levon, and Nora. Richard is also survived by his father Henry Kozinski and his brothers Ron Kozinski and Nadia, Alan Kozinski and Elva, and Brian Kozinski and Mary Ann. He was predeceased by his mother Mary Kozinski. An expression of sympathy has been sent by administration to family on behalf of the Board.
Thank you so much, Chief Superintendent Anderson and Superintendent Kennard, for acknowledging the gift Richard was to us all. He will be dearly missed. And while his loss leaves a void, and he has created an indelible legacy, which he'll be fondly remembered for. And we reiterate, on behalf of the Board, heartfelt condolences to his family and school community, praying that eternal rest and perpetual light shine upon his soul. May he rest in peace. And seeing no one else in queue, we will move on. Correct. Yes, thank you very much, Superintendent Kennard. We will now move on to, and you know, I have to say, yes, we're going to let the wonderful, extraordinary, remarkable, incredible Makayla Mann. You're probably going to go and mark or something, right? Yeah, something to that effect. Anyway, thank you once again. She's kind of making eye contact with me, but I did tell her from the beginning, I said, "Don't sit through this whole thing." Thank you so much. Okay, we will now move on to number two, Presentation and Review of Accountability Reports. 2.1, Supporting and Advancing a Staff of Lifelong Learners in Our Catholic Context. And over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, we, as a division, are committed to providing exceptional professional learning opportunities for our staff and ensuring that they grow and develop as they support our mission. This commitment is reflected in the Division's priority of learning excellence, which aims to build staff capacity to meet students' needs, foster collaboration, and provide opportunities for staff to achieve learning excellence. Collaboration is also fostered between our departments. And today, we have Superintendent Kennard with the support of Superintendent Peterson and Superintendent Fian. And we will share their comprehensive approach to supporting staff on lifelong learning. And so over to you, Superintendent Kennard, to kick it off.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson. As an educational organization, Edmonton Catholic Schools is committed to providing exceptional professional learning opportunities for all staff to ensure that they also grow and develop as they support our mission to provide a Catholic education that inspires students to learn and prepares them to serve God in one another. This commitment is reflected in the Division's priority of learning excellence, which aims to build staff capacity to meet student needs, foster collaboration, and provide opportunities for staff to achieve learning excellence. Part and parcel this important work with our staff, regardless of the role they fill in the division, is ensuring that all that we do is rooted in our Catholic faith and that our staff understands our Catholic context. This report provides insights into the many ways in which we support our staff so that they can advance in their vocation with Edmonton Catholic Schools. In the ever-evolving landscape of education, it is essential that staff within the division have access to professional learning opportunities. This commitment ensures that our staff remain up to date and well-informed in their respective areas of expertise. It is my pleasure to present the work of my colleagues in other departments, so Superintendent Peterson and Superintendent Fian, as well as the other departments that support this important work in our division. In addition to teachers, Edmonton Catholic Schools has three other unique employee groups that help contribute to the daily operations and mission and vision of Edmonton Catholic. These positions require post-secondary education and/or specialized knowledge, which may include lived experience or understanding of indigenous ways of knowing, being, and doing, familiarity with different cultures and/or fluency in additional languages, or understanding of specialized trades, equipments, or tools. In addition to this specialized knowledge and experience, many of our roles also require additional certification or designation. While some of the certifications and designations are considered assets, some are required to be able to practice in their respective professions. Additionally, some certifications are obtained once, while others require the employee to renew regularly. In our appendix and up on the screen here, you'll see examples of some of the specialized certifications and designations we require or prefer when hiring to positions within Edmonton Catholic. Whether it's specialized knowledge, experience, or additional certification, the diversity in our employees' experience and education helps support and serve the students and community of Edmonton Catholic Schools. In April of 2024, Human Resource Services partnered with Mercer Canada, a human resources consulting firm, to begin a project to review Edmonton Catholic School Division's total compensation program and all 210-plus unique out-of-scope job positions. This review project will help ensure that ECSD remains competitive to job seekers, help retain and value our current employees, and ensure our pay practices are equitable. In addition, this project will facilitate the transition to a new job evaluation system that will support a more robust job evaluation process by recognizing and measuring the unique needs of positions in a public sector and educational context. The estimated completion date of the review portion for this project is June 2025, with any changes to position titles, classifications, et cetera, to be completed after consulting with the appropriate partners. Once all the changes have been implemented, our goal will be to do periodic reviews of the positions and compensation to ensure we are always remaining competitive and equitable. In addition to the unique professional development plans of our department staff, our Learning and Development Specialist supports teams in their department developmental goals. This year, we proactively enhance departmental support by offering tailored training sessions aimed at fostering continuous professional development and addressing specific areas for growth. These initiatives, aligned with departmental goals, promoted cross-departmental collaboration and knowledge sharing, thereby enhancing overall organizational performance and innovation. Through coaching and feedback, employees were empowered to apply new skills effectively, cultivating a culture of continuous improvement. So here you can see a listing of some of the sessions that our Learning and Development Specialist, Erin Sokoloski, has worked on with some of the department staff. This year, we made a change to what was formerly known as our Manager and Supervisor PD Sessions. The rebranded Department Leadership Meetings are now better aligned with the needs and development of our Department Leadership Team. These meetings are held bi-monthly and include superintendent items, a keynote presentation sharing information relevant to all department leaders, and breakout sessions. Based on feedback from last year's meetings, we have successfully tailored breakout sessions on topics that directly apply to our leaders. To enhance engagement and cross-departmental collaboration, we introduced engagement groups that foster community building, drive innovation, and increase leadership capacity through problem-solving. Some of the topics that we've covered so far this year were WCB reporting, common leadership styles, strategies for team meetings, finance and procurement and payments, universal design for learning, job description writing, artificial intelligence, resilience in the workplace, and employee health services. We are honored to have Father Glenn join us at our upcoming Department Leadership Meeting to discuss the unique experience of being a non-Catholic, working within a Catholic organization. Father Glenn will explore how we can all live the vision and mission of ECSD, even if we are not Catholic. He will delve into what it means to embody the values of compassion, service, and community that are at the heart of our organization. And that's because some of our department staff are not Catholic, although they do participate with us in our faith-based activities. And so it's really important to us that they have a good understanding of what it means to be in a Catholic organization. As we continue our department leadership meetings, we'll gather data to meet the needs of our leaders, ensuring we offer innovative and engaging development opportunities. The SHINE Leadership Development Framework was created last year to build leadership capacity across the department-based staff in the division. While designed for non-school-based staff, who may not be Catholic, it aligns with the principles of servant leadership deeply rooted in Catholic faith. Catholic teachings emphasize serving others, fostering community, and promoting the common good, which resonate with the framework's focus on visionary leadership, collaboration, and personal growth. Based on the developmental needs of ECSD department staff, we launched three distinct leadership programs, which we'll look at briefly here. Our first program is the Aspiring Leader Program. We have 21 participants across 11 departments participating in this this year. And this program aims to enhance participants' understanding of personal leadership qualities and to improve job performance through a leadership lens. We also have our Team Leader Program, which comprises seven participants across six departments. This program aims to shift the focus from self-leadership to team leadership. Throughout the year, we've discussed what distinguishes a leader from a manager, taking specific notes from Simon Sinek's book, Leaders Eat Last. We also have our Division Leader Program. And unlike the previous two cohorts, the Division Leader Cohort does not have a set agenda. Instead, seven division leaders share their thoughts, insights, and best practices around organization-wide initiatives they're currently undertaking. As a working community of practice, they candidly discuss obstacles and foster collaboration and knowledge sharing among professionals dealing with an organizational change. I will now invite Crystal Jones, our HR Manager, Staffing, and Stephanie Malcolm, our Recruitment Lead, to share a story with us. And it's very fitting that we're sharing this today, because you're going to learn about what Makayla's last couple of years have been as she got to know us here at Edmonton Catholic.
Thank you, Superintendent Kennard. Yes, as Superintendent Kennard stated, we are extremely thrilled to be here today and included in this agenda as we take you on a story-based journey that will follow a beginning teacher in Edmonton Catholic Schools, from their first encounter with us to the end of their first year in the classroom. So from inspiration to impact, we invite you to close your eyes for a moment and imagine yourself, or a loved one, or Makayla, stepping into a new school community as a teacher for the first time. Stephanie Melkin, Recruitment and Retention Lead with our division, together with our team, has re-envisioned us and our beginning teachers to see themselves in the journey of a beginning Catholic teacher from our very first interaction with them. So we hope you enjoy our presentation.
So before we begin, we would like, like Crystal said, just to picture yourself as this beginning teacher or someone you know. And it begins with a teacher named Cory. His journey begins in his third year of university. He sits in lecture halls, reads textbooks on pedagogy, and writes essays on inclusive education. Cory is learning what it means to be a teacher, but he hasn't felt it yet, not really, until he meets Edmonton Catholic School leaders, consultants, or recruitment team members in their classes, at St. Joseph's College, or even attending the Admitted Student Day. So I'm going to jump out of this story for a moment and just explain how this day was such a meaningful opportunity for myself. Being in this role for six months, I tapped Natalie on the shoulder and I said, "Natalie, is this something I should go to?" "Oh, my goodness, absolutely. Okay, no problem. I'm there." So I was able to be in this classroom. There was about 30 or 40 students who had been accepted into the education program at the university. So we, as a panelist, so this consisted of a variety of education students, associate deans, and professors. And Edmonton Catholic Schools was the only school division there in person. So that was really unique, as again, I didn't know what to expect. And this was an opportunity for the students there that were getting ready on this journey to ask questions and so be part of a Q&amp;A panel. And one of the questions that really stuck to me was, "How did I know I wanted to pursue this vocation with Edmonton Catholic Schools?" And that was just kind of that moment where they wanted to listen to me. And so I do believe I made Edmonton Catholics proud with that response. So that moment, that vocation, that email or table at a career fair is more than a recruitment strategy. It is an invitation into a lifelong calling. From the moment ECSD meets Cory, before his practicum, something shifts. This isn't just about a job prospect, it's about a vocation. Cory begins to imagine his future not just as a teacher, but as a Catholic educator, someone who will pray with their students, someone who will help a child find their voice, someone who will bring hope into hallways. That early connection plants a seed. So when Cory starts his practicum, he already knows that our division walks with him. He already feels part of something bigger than a school. It's a mission. So another event that we had the opportunity of hosting here at Edmonton Catholic Schools, which many of you were able to attend, was our ECSD Networking Event. So this was something, again, I always heard, "This is so great, it's wonderful," but to be a part of it, there were just no words. It just was our opportunity to showcase all of our supports and people who care about our teachers. We are passionate about what we do, and that night, everyone felt it. The smiles, the conversation, and the energy that came from Leadership Hall filled us with hope for the future educators that will soon join Edmonton Catholic School Division. And so when the first practicum day arrives, nerves, coffee and all, Cory steps into the classroom with trembling hands but a steady heart. Because he knows he is not alone. The consultant, division leader, or recruitment team who first spoke with them now shows up again, this time in his classroom. Not to judge, not to evaluate, but to support, to offer resources, to listen, to say, "You're already making a difference." Throughout the practicum, Cory has the opportunity to attend professional development with his mentor teacher, school events, and liturgical life. He can participate in Human Resource Info Sessions and receive one-on-one support with their applications. Cory's mentor teacher will also receive gifts in appreciation for their hard work and dedication to their practicum with Edmonton Catholic Schools. So the last couple of weeks, we have been preparing 500 gifts, give or take, as I kept getting emails, "Oh, we need some more for our mentor teachers." "We had to add more student teachers to the schools because they're in such high demand." So we were preparing all of these gifts to send out just to provide gratitude, because like Sandra Palazzo always says, "Thank you is just not enough." So a little token for them. Again, it's small, but sometimes that's all it takes. So Cory has learned from the application one-on-one sessions with our Human Resource Team. He has the opportunity to apply before he has finished his final practicum, should he want to embark on that. Cory decides to apply to Edmonton Catholic Schools. The hiring process is more than paperwork. It's a commitment to living our mission and values. Cory has a specific question regarding the documentation, so he reaches out to the recruitment team, who schedules a phone call or Teams to connect with Cory to ensure his questions are answered. And he feels supported in this process, as we know this can be stressful. Once Cory has been invited for an interview, we share that there will be two panelists, recently retired principals, principals, or assistant principals. And recently, our consultants have now joined our team as we have so many student teachers that want to be interviewed to start right away. So we are amping up our recruitment. So our interview process remains rigorous as we want to ensure we uphold our Catholic education standards as well as ensure we have the best teachers in front of our students. And Chief Lynette Anderson, your words so fitting in this that you talked about, are ensuring that we uphold our Catholic education here. Once successful, Cory will receive a call that day or the next that he has been successful and ask if he would like a position with Edmonton Catholic Schools. Now, knowing about the generations and working with our Generation Z applicants, we need to ensure that they see themselves in us and they feel valued and supported. So Cory will be hired onto our sub-roster, as each of the successful applicants are. Sometimes they can be here for 10 minutes, depending on their experiences, depending on what the need of the schools are. And then we will look at those experiences and specializations. And sometimes, they will move right away into that position at a school. And we know that a teacher is not just a teacher, and we want them to be sure that they are set up for and we want them to be sure that they are set up for success. So when we speak with Corey, we explain that our priority is to ensure he is set up for success and we want to know his goals and aspirations for him, so that he can be recommended or placed in a position that he will feel that he can return to work every day, so that it is not stressful. It becomes that passion. It's me again. All right. We're going to continue on with Corey as he graciously accepts this position with Edmonton Catholic Schools. And he has told that his next steps will be receiving an email with more documents, and especially that letter of employment. This, we realized, speeds up the recruitment process so that he can receive the dean's letter and start as soon as he's graduated. So depending on the applicant, we also provide promissory letters, because as we've learned with the generation, some don't want that, as it creates more additional stress. And we want them to also be able to focus on their practicums and finishing that, as that is at the forefront of what they need to do. So some opportunities, once they graduate, is they can always sub in May and June and really experience our schools and the communities that we offer. Another one is recruitment placement, which we will talk with them, see where they've done their practicums, and reach out to see if they want to be placed at a school. And then really, their position would then evolve to the needs of that school. So they wouldn't go to a variety, they would report to one. And then their experience at that school would change, depending on the need. Of course, temporary contracts. And they also have access to Bulletin III in June. So that is essentially a possibility to secure a position for the fall, which is also really exciting for them. So essentially, Corey is excited to hear these options and know that he is in good hands to be set up for success.
Thank you. I hope everyone got some socks today. Did you get some socks?
Yeah.
That was in our swag for the gifts, so I'm glad. So Corey, thank you Stephanie. I think Corey, at this point, is already rooted in hope as he's beginning his teaching journey. So it's very exciting. So the day has come, and Corey has all of his documents in and is ready to start. And so that onboarding begins. We are all responsible for onboarding teachers. And I think this is very important as we look at our recruitment, is that we all play a part, a special part in recruitment of teachers. And I think that this presentation is so fitting into the agenda items today, where we can see and hear the stories of Corey and Makayla within Edmonton Catholic Schools and the education profession. So it's very exciting. And then we're also a part, all of us play a part in that retention piece as well. And we know that those first few years of teaching are extremely challenging and complex. And we need to ensure as a division that we're walking alongside our teachers. So we do that by ensuring that onboarding is positive and rewarding for our new teachers. We make sure that they are fully prepared as they go onto the classroom, even though it is a very fast process. And some of the things we look at is looking at our Respect in the Workplace initiative, ensuring that they are set up with all the technology needs within the classroom environment, looking at our code of conduct, our professionalism, looking at our Alberta Teaching Quality Standard, supporting them through the evaluation process, looking at our Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Anti-Racism Strategic Plan, and ensuring that they have access to all the support as they enter the classroom and within our division. So we're very excited with and how we support our new teachers.
Corey has accepted a temporary contract in his school. He is now imagining stepping into a new school building, not as a student, not even as a guest, but as a teacher. He's finished university, applied for a teaching position, had an interview, and is now placed in an assignment in a school. Corey is armed with ideas, dreams, and maybe a few Pinterest boards full of classroom setup tips. But underneath the excitement is a quiet voice whispering, am I ready for this? He walks into his classroom for the first time. The roster is unfamiliar. He doesn't yet know who will need a quiet space after recess, or who will beam with pride when they read aloud for the first time. The truth is, Corey is not just setting up a classroom. He's building a sanctuary, a place of hope, a place for belonging. And Corey is doing it all while learning the beginning of being a teacher. The first month is hard. The weight of curriculum, classroom management, and assessment is heavier than it looked on paper. There are late nights marking, or leaving a board meeting and marking when she gets home. Tears after a rough parent's phone call, and quiet moments of wondering, did I choose the right path? But something shifts. A colleague pops in to say, you're doing great. Remember, I remember what it felt like. The assistant principal checks in and say, I saw how you handled that situation. That mattered. A consultant from the division pops by, not to evaluate, but to sit, to listen, and to offer strategies, encouragement, and remind them, you're not alone. This is a calling. We see you. Soon Corey starts to notice the magic. A student lingers at the end of the day to help clean up. A parent writes a note, my child is excited to learn again. He hears laughter during morning routines. Prayer becomes more meaningful. A member of the school family, a builder of hearts and minds, a witness to grace in ordinary moments.
As the year progresses, Edmonton Catholic Schools facilitates cohort gatherings and consultant-led check-ins. These moments foster collaboration, care, and shared faith. Corey becomes immediately involved in liturgical and parish life, faith formation events, and continued and ongoing support from our consultants and our departments, Religious Education Services, Learning Services, Inclusive Learning, Indigenous Learning Services, and many more of all of our teams. He participates in school-based meetings to learn more about his students and families. He has access to PD, and this mentoring strengthens his skills and confidence as a first-year teacher. He has had the opportunity to be included in a full wraparound, supported, permeated-of-faith, school-based community, where he feels valued and supported within his classroom. His confidence continues to build. Student success becomes more evident. Colleagues and amin recognize his growth. It's truly a moment of affirmation and joy. The evaluation process may start. And when it does, he will feel ready by our leadership teams. Teachers participate in a very intentional evaluation process, unpacking the Alberta Teaching Quality Standard and the commitment to the gospel teachings, as they reflect on where they see themselves in each competency and utilizing our Observation and Reflection Document to support this evidence and practice and the areas of growth that he faces each day. He is now prepared for the upcoming staffing cycle. I may not be, but he is. And here we are today. And so as Corey enters the staffing cycle, we hope that we can look at his goals and aspirations and his commitment as a first-year teacher and ensure that we are finding the best fit for Corey.
Why it matters through a beginning teacher's eyes. So I've had the opportunity to be part of our interview panels over the last six months. And one of my favorite questions to ask our applicants and our candidates who come through our doors is, why did you apply to Edmonton Catholic Schools? And what brought you to do that? So we have a couple responses that I would like to share with you. I choose to apply to Edmonton Catholic School Division because I grew up going to Edmonton Catholic Schools as a student, and I couldn't imagine working for another division. Growing up, I didn't have a strong sense of faith, but I was fortunate to have completed both of my practicums with Edmonton Catholic School Division. And now I am finding a church community of my own and looking into the RCIA, something that I did not think I would feel so strongly about. I want to work for the Edmonton Catholic School Division. The support I have received and the way Edmonton Catholic School Division has made me feel from the moment we met at the career fair to the application and interview process has easily made the decision that Edmonton Catholic School Division is where I want to start my career.
So our teachers are called, rooted, and they grow forward in their faith and in their profession. As a division, we are committed and will continue to walk alongside our beginning teachers. We are reminded that teaching is more than a profession. It is a vocation rooted in faith, hope, and community. Through intentional support, meaningful relationships, and a shared mission, Edmonton Catholic Schools nurtures the growth of each new teacher so they may flourish and in turn inspire the next generation. Together, we plant seeds of hope that continue to grow in every classroom, in every teacher, in every student, and every day. Thank you for your time today.
As you can see, our beginning teachers are in good hands. And that extends not only from our recruitment team, but also to all of the departments that support our beginning teachers and also to the schools that welcome them. So we're very proud of the work that we, together as a division, do to support our new teachers. So I now hand it over to Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you Superintendent Kennard. And thank you Manager Crystal Jones and Recruitment Lead Stephanie Malkin for painting such a vivid picture of that journey from beginning in university and into the first year. And it's just comforting to know that they're supported along the way and set up for success. I just want to also recognize that our division is incredibly diverse, as Superintendent Kennard mentioned, and how each department within the division is committed to ensuring that staff remain current in their fields. And so I just also want to acknowledge Superintendent Nakarado, Superintendent Fiaco, Superintendent Wazelenko, CFO Schultz, and General Counsel Carbonick, who also ensure that their department staff have access to exceptional learning opportunities. And just that extensive range of professional learning that you showed does provide our staff opportunities to engage and ensure our students benefit from that excellent Catholic educational journey. And so, Madam Chair, the recommendations are that, based on the evidence provided in the report supporting and advancing a staff of lifelong learners in our Catholic context, the Board of Trustees determines that the following quality indicators have been met as per Board Policy 12 Appendix B relative to the current evaluation period. Quality indicator 1.6, 3.3, 5.1, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Kennard, Superintendent Peterson, Superintendent Van, and all of our superintendents in their respective departments. And to you, I'm going to just say, Crystal and Stephanie, you've made it so personable that I feel that I want to be hired by you. And so, that being said, I want to thank you for planting the seed in representing Edmonton Catholic. I want to thank you for introducing us to Corey. I was so relieved for Corey, you know, because I really wanted Corey to work for Edmonton Catholic, for the networking event, for sharing the testimonials. And those were huge. When I was listening to those testimonials and reading them, I thought, what an honor for them to want to teach with Edmonton Catholic because of these reasons. So again, kudos to you and your team. I want to thank you for your passion today. And again, it's tough to be able to come in front of the board and sit there and present, but you're amazing. You're very effective. And I can honestly understand why our teachers would want to come and teach with Edmonton Catholic after having met the both of you and, of course, the entire team. The slides that you provided were extremely effective. I love the flourishing in vocation, and you're not alone. I mean, they spoke to me. And when they speak to you, they're obviously going to speak to anyone who comes through these doors. And that's our job. We need to be recruiting the best of the best for our kids. That being said, thank you to all of you and your respective teams for this excellent presentation and report in providing the exceptional, well, all of the information, but the exceptional PD opportunities that are available for staff to build capacity, of course, to achieve optimal, there's our famous word for the year, our optimal learning excellence, and of course, to promote continuous improvement. Like, we never stop. It's kind of like, okay, we're here, now where are we going to go with this? And I'm always worried for you, because I think, what if they can't go anymore? Like, if you get to 100, you're going to go for 101. I don't know how you're going to do that, but I'd sure love to see it. But you do it through a Catholic context in our commitment to cultivating lifelong learners and fostering a successful, faith-filled community where educators feel supported, inspired, and valued. And we know, we saw it. We saw it at how extremely impressive it was to, we celebrated the staff on Monday night. And it was amazing, because a couple of them said, I wasn't even going to come. I'm so glad I did. And I thought, why wouldn't you come? But you know, like, I mean, the fact that they're being recognized and honored and they feel valued. Again, just kudos to all of you. It's a lot of work, but you do it with such passion. There's our passion word again. And as this is a recommendation, it does require a motion. I will turn it to Trustee Mutala, who's in queue. Go ahead, please, Trustee Mutala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that, based on the evidence provided in the report supporting and advancing a staff of lifelong learners in our Catholic context, the Board of Trustees determines the following quality indicators have been met as per Board Policy 12 Appendix B relative to the current evaluation period. Quality indicator 1.6, 3.1, 5.1, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I would, but you have said so much wonderful words about it all. But you know what? I just want to say thank you to Chief Superintendent Anderson and all the other superintendents, and to our managers here that have helped us today. You know what? I have worked for other boards in Alberta, and I am so grateful always when I see what Edmonton Catholic does and how we support every staff member. And you have all employee groups covered. And then when the story about the new teachers, you just don't put them in a classroom and hope they sink or swim. You are there, like, we're there for all of our staff members, all of our new people. I'm so grateful for this, because this is such a wonderful learning experience and professional development for our vocations. And they all are vocations. And they're all helping to provide success for our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Beautifully said. Trustee Teberr, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the reasons that we always showcase these amazing reports, and it's not only because, like, you know, we want to take the opportunity to highlight the amazing work that we're doing that happens just seamlessly behind the scenes, right? Never, never a problem, right? It all goes perfect. But it also, you know, it showcases, not only does it take so, so many people to educate one child, just to support that one child, but, you know, I want to thank you for highlighting these quality indicators. And for those that do not know, these reports are the witness and the evidence that our division has to support and promote publicly-funded Catholic education. So everything from the legislation, from the OHNS to the TQSs, the Teacher Quality Standards, the hiring, the promoting of many, many individuals that takes to support, again, one child of God. From the ever-changing trends in education, we all know those happen very quickly. We look at AI, we look at what's going to happen next. We don't know what's going to happen next. But it's, again, that PD that is always there to building, you know, our strong faith community. Because that is why we are here, for our faith and our love of Catholic education and of God. And it never ends, nor should it. Because when we look at education, again, the trends and the way things happen are quick. So for all your work to make this all work for the best interest of each and every child to succeed, and again, whatever that means for that child. Because what is success for one is not success for the other one. So again, we are just so proud to advocate for Edmonton Catholic Schools because of reports like this. Because of our focus on making sure that we highlight and we provide the evidence, the evidence base, concrete, Corey. You know, we can talk about somebody that's real, and it, again, just highlights what we do, how we do it, and why we do it so well. So again, advocating, another tool that we can now use and really promote it. And again, I thank you for your work and time that even just to put into this, because there's so many pieces that you've had to probably to figure out and pull and, you know, interview. And, but it's your daily life. And I know that you're thinking, ah, no problem, I do this all the time. But to put it together for us, again, so we have this ability and this evidence to promote and advocate for Catholic education, thank you. Well done.
Well said, Trustee Teberr. Thank you. Trustee Harris, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just want to express deep appreciation.
Just want to express deep appreciation, Superintendent Kennard, Crystal, and Stephanie. Great presentation. You know, we've we've talked about this before, but it's oftentimes one of the most important jobs of any leader is the identification, recruitment, and development of gifted people. Again, you get that decision right, it's the wind under your wings. You get that decision wrong, it's correction, deflection, distraction, right? So I do very much appreciate how the level of rigor that you put into this. It's it's extremely important to make sure that this is done very, very well, that we get that we get the very best people. It's one of the reasons, of course, staff. Teachers and staff, one of the very key reasons why Edmonton Catholic is considered one of the, you know, 80 best employers in the province 10 years running, right? Because we get great people. And we have great systems, robust systems for supporting those people. I was very impressed with the report. You you talked about all the systems and the relationships that support our teachers and the development of our teachers. It always strikes me that we want to be treating our employees the way we want our employees to be treating our very best customers. Our customers are our families, are our students. And so when I hear about the level, the robust systems and the the high-quality relationships that are supporting our new teachers, what that speaks to me of is how our teachers then support our students, right? So those those incredible systems and those, the the development and the modeling of those relationships then then support, it really comes right back to the to the students, right? And and of course, this is a learning organization by its nature. And it's full of lifelong learners. So I was very happy to see, you know, the the references to lifelong learning here. We see, we absolutely model that. We, I think, are an organization that has a that is full of people that have a zest for lifelong learning. And and we show it every day. And of course, that lifelong learning also relates to the amount of innovation that we see in the division, right? People always prepared to try things a little differently with with support and understanding that, yeah, mistakes will happen, but that's an opportunity for learning itself, right? So this is all good. So again, I want to thank you so much for for clarifying the sorts of support, systems, relationships that support our teachers, our new teachers, understanding that that has a ripple effect right to right to the frontline into our students. I do have a question, and the question relates to, we know, and we see through the data, there's always challenges in this environment recruiting those teachers and 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 staff. And I'm wondering how those stresses and pressures are coming to play in our recruitment efforts, okay? And I'm also understanding that the provincial government has put an additional, as I understand, about $1.1 billion into the system for to for the recruitment of 4,000 additional, is it 4,000 additional teachers over the course of the next three, four years, something like that? How how we manage this within an environment of of a very competitive environment for getting teachers? And I'd like to get your your sense on on that. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Chairperson Palazzo to Trustee Harris. Thank you for your question. It is definitely a challenging time for recruitment in in Alberta, particularly with teachers. So I appreciate that you acknowledge that. I think this is where, as Chair Palazzo said, we keep getting better and better, and we have to always be innovative. One thing that, as long as I've been involved in recruitment with Edmonton Catholic Schools, the comment that keeps coming back when people do choose to to be with us for their career is the relationship piece. We we approach it differently than than some other employers would in that we really want to make sure that Edmonton Catholic is the best choice for them and that they are the best choice for Edmonton Catholic. And I think that is something that that resonates with our candidates. Where we're not pressuring, we're not saying, we need you to make a decision by noon today. We really want to make sure that people are comfortable and supported in their decisions. And so we're always looking for different partnerships that we can explore, different different avenues for recruitment. We we say often that everybody is a recruiter in Edmonton Catholic Schools. And when people are in our schools, they want to continue to be in our schools and our departments because we do wonderful things to support our students in Catholic education. And really, we have so, we're so thankful for our teachers and our other professionals who take on practicum students. And that happens in in our schools, in our departments. And that really is our greatest form of recruitment. So we continue to explore those avenues.
Thanks very much, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a a question on understanding the recruitment challenges, scarcity of these precious resources. How far afield do we have to go at this stage? And to, you know, to ensure that we can fulfill the need, you know, make sure that we got the teachers, all the teachers and educational assistants that we need? How far afield do we have to go to get that? And are we competitive in terms of, you know, compensation, those kinds of things?
Thank you. Chair Palazzo through to Trustee Harris. I would say that we are competitive in terms of salary. The salary for teachers are not, you know, that there's not that much variety from from division to division. So that doesn't play as much of a factor as some of the other compensation that we would offer in terms of our benefits, et cetera, and also just the experience that that we would offer. In past, we would we would recruit across Canada. We're finding right now that is has not been as successful in past years. And our best, our best teachers for us to recruit are homegrown. And so often there are students that went through Edmonton Catholic Schools and people who've done their practicums here. So we're really focusing our recruitment efforts locally.
You know, and that's where I was asking, how far afield do we have to go, right? And it's it's telling, of course, that you'd indicated that those, that outreach to other provinces maybe isn't yielding the same value benefit that it did in prior years. And so my question in relation to how competitive are we was in relation to other provinces. Because I do understand that we have a fairly, with the central bargaining, we have, you know, those standard sort of rates across, very much, very, very much across the province. So what I'm hearing you saying is that the the positioning of Alberta's remuneration compensation, those kinds of things, is not leaving us in a, in a, in a, in a, it's leaving us in a competitive position within the province. But in relation to where we sit with other provinces, it's not, we're finding that we're not quite as competitive as we used to be. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Trustee Harris. And so before I open it up to Trustee Engel, we just want you to know that you'll be very proud of us because on Saturday, we, Saturday, we went to the St. Joseph's, we were at St. Joseph's and we passed out a lot of cards to recruit. So if you get a lot of Edmonton Catholic, that's us, that's us. That I will turn it over to Trustee Engel. Trustee Engel.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thank you to Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Kennard, and of course Christine and Stephanie for making the support of new teachers such a high priority because that is the key to sustaining the excellent teachers that we have in place into the future. Oh, what an inspirational presentation. It was truly heartwarming to see how our new teachers are not only supported, but also formed in a way that keeps their faith and vocation at the heart of their work. Crystal and Stephanie gave us a beautiful look at the journey from a student in education to a settled, faithful teacher in our schools. It is clear that ECSD is committed to shaping a staff of lifelong learners, educators who are deeply rooted in faith and dedicated to the mission of Catholic education. We are so blessed in Alberta to have publicly funded Catholic education, the ability to educate within a Catholic context with the presence of Jesus at the center of our schools and the actual reason for our schools. It is truly such a gift. Thank you to everyone who helps ensure this sacred mission continues with strength and purpose. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have no questions. I just have a lot of woo-hoos and commendations for the excellent presentation we heard and for the work that is being done by our human resources team. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Engel. And was there anybody else who? I see no one else in queue. All right. So seeing no one else in queue, I'll once again just echo the sentiments of our board, applaud the efforts of each of you for cultivating a community of lifelong learner learners. But I also wanted to, and I, Trustee Harris, you 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 inspired me to think about this. I want to applaud you for your trust. I think the fact that you trust one another and you allow one another to do your job and to fulfill your role, that's huge. And I think that's one thing that we truly can give ourselves a pat on the back on. That's extremely important and extremely important for our young teachers because they're given, we provide them with the tools. You're instrumental in providing them with the resources and supports and the tools that they need in order to succeed. But you don't go in and, you know, every second. So I just wanted to say thank you. Trust is extremely important and goes a long way, which is obviously speaks volumes to the reason that all of those teachers that we provided cards to will be coming to Edmonton Catholic Schools. That being said, I will turn it over back over to you, Trustee Mutala, should you wish to close your motion at this time.
I just want to say a big thank you and thank you for continuous support of every one of our staff members. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And at this time, we will call the vote. There we go. Thank you very much. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, I'll note for the record that the motion is carried. Thank you once again. Thank you. This now takes us to 3.1 Board Chair Report, and I'll take the opportunity to highlight, and I think there's a lot of really important parts to the Board Chair Report, which I'd like to read. And one of them, well, there's two areas in particular. One of it is, one piece is that I'd like to highlight that the Easter season serves as a reminder that hope is never in vain. And if Father Julian was here, he would say, Happy Easter indeed.
Indeed. No, he says, Christ is risen, indeed he has risen.
Yep. So you know what? That resonated for me. And I thought, you know, we've got 50 days, and even Bishop David last night said, we've got 50 days. Okay, I thought, great. Anyway, that being said, hope is never in vain and that God's promises are always fulfilled. As we embrace the renewal of spring and celebrate the resurrection of Jesus Christ, we do the same at Edmonton Catholic Schools, and we give thanks for the educators, our students, and families who witnessed the living Christ through their compassion, courage, and commitment. I'm going to now go on to celebrate or to share the the wonderful opportunity that we took on April 9th and 10th because we celebrated our annual Lumen Christie Student Faith Leadership Awards. And this event recognized a true highlight for the board. It recognized 94 remarkable students for their leadership in faith, service, and community while reinforcing the value of faith-driven service. The board was extremely proud, is extremely proud of the of of these students. And we're also extremely proud of the outstanding results from the Edmonton, from our ECSD Assurance Survey that was conducted to engage stakeholders with respect to the quality of Catholic education. This is online. I'm not going to share it all with you, but just kudos to the staff and and for providing those results to us. We're extremely proud. And then the only last piece that I wanted to, well, I talked about long service. I talked about celebration of the arts. The only last piece is that, and I think this is really important, is that on behalf of the Edmonton Catholic Schools Board of Trustees, we extend our deepest sorrow as we join Catholics around the world in mourning of the passing of our Holy Father Pope Francis. A faithful servant and a humble shepherd, Pope Francis led the Church with compassion, courage, and profound wisdom. His unwavering commitment to the gospel and his witness to mercy and justice have left an enduring mark on our world and in our hearts. We give thanks for his life of selfless service and pray for the repose of his soul. May he rest in peace of Christ. And with that, I'll read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Board Chair Report on hashtag ECSD Faith Inspires, March 14th, 2025 to April 24th, 2025 for information purposes. And we'll now move on to 3.2 Chief Superintendent Report, and we'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I also would like to highlight just a few of the activities that occurred this month. Knowing there's a a long list, April, May, June are really busy. But just a few things I'd like to highlight and actually just continuing the thread of what you shared, Chair Palazzo. We know the world was deeply saddened by the death of our Holy Father Pope Francis. And so our community was united in prayer and responded by sharing resources and activities for our schools and sites. And we continue to do that through the support of our religious education team, knowing that there are, we're going through the process right now of selection of a new of a new pope. And and for students to follow that is is a real important time for them to to participate and understand that process. As you mentioned as well, the Faith Leadership Awards at Lumen Christie is always an exciting time to see students come with their parents and be recognized for their strong faith and celebrating God's love. We also, as a staff, participated in the annual Grace for Heart and Soul Afternoon, and sites had several activities to choose from based on interests and contexts and needs of of their individual sites. And we've been hearing really positive feedback from from that afternoon. Under Learning Excellence, I'm excited to share that I attended and presented at the ATA Council for School Leadership's ULEAD Conference. And it was a great opportunity for leaders across the province to gather and learn about leadership best practice. But what was unique about this year was there was a Catholic stream of sessions for school leaders to choose from. And so that was unique to have participants come specifically to hear about Catholic education and in terms of leadership. And so well-attended, and and it was exciting for those people that organized it. I I feel that that's not going to be the only time we do this stream. It's it's something that definitely, with everyone coming and and identifying that this was important, there'll be more to come. If you participated last night in Celebration of the Arts, we're at a loss for words. It was just an incredible night and just really want to acknowledge our our student performers, the staff that supported them, and Learning Services and Communications, of course, with all the behind-the-scenes work that they provided to make it such a fabulous event. Under Organizational Excellence, this month, we are recognizing support staff. And so we have various ways that schools are recognizing these important people. And just want to thank and acknowledge all the support staff and the incredible work that they do. We also had our final Student Voice Meeting for the school year. And again, we learned so much from these students and just want to highlight how much we value their voice and take it into consideration when we do have decisions to make. And so next month, we'll be able to recognize them more formally. And finally, in embracing diversity, we have two celebrations this month. We are recognizing Autism Celebration Month. And thank you to Learning Services, who included all sorts of resources and videos to have conversations with their staff in regards to how to support our students. And we also have National French Immersion Day that's celebrated this month and going back to 1972 when it was first introduced. So lots to celebrate there. And so, Madam Chair, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Chief Superintendent's Report on hashtag ECSD Faith Inspires, April 2025 for information purposes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, for your report. And it continues, you know, going through the framework and everything that you share regarding all of the highlights that happen in our division along with your team and and your responsiveness. You're both yours and and those of your senior leadership team are extremely, extremely appreciated. And we want to applaud you on behalf of the board for the leadership that you are taking, even being presenting at ULEAD. And, you know, I it really elevates Edmonton Catholic. And so we just wanted to applaud you on that because, of course, in addition, she goes to ULEAD, but she continues to work. And so I'm thinking, okay, so when you go to ULEAD, you're supposed to be at ULEAD, but there she was continuing. So I just want, we want to applaud you on that and to thank you for the exemplary work that's being done here at Edmonton Catholic Schools and continuously looking for improvement. That being said, as this is not a motion, I take pride in reading the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Chief Superintendent's Report on hashtag ECSD Faith Inspires, April 2025 for information purposes. And this now takes us to 4.1, and I will turn it over to Trustee Engel for our closing prayer. Trustee Engel, if you could please put yourself in queue. There we go. Go ahead, please.
In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Loving God, we thank you for the gift of Catholic education and the opportunity to serve your people through our work. May all we do reflect the light of May all we do reflect the light of Christ and the values of our faith. In this season of growth, renew our hearts with hope, deepen our commitment to the mission of our schools, and guide us as we support the students, families, and staff entrusted to our care. Bless our journey ahead and keep us rooted in faith, united in purpose, and open to your will. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you very much, Trustee Engel. We miss you, and we look forward to having you back. Last on the agenda is 4.2, and we are looking for a motion to adjourn. I do see Vice Chair Truchansky in queue, not sure if it's to move the motion. It is, and so I'll turn it over to you, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we close this joyful meeting.
Thank you very much. And do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do not.
And seeing no one else in queue, well, I do, but yes, that's what I thought. And so we will move on to vote, please, to the vote. And Trustee Engel, we're just waiting for your vote, please. Oh, there we go. Thank you very much. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion to adjourn is carried. Thank you once again, everyone, and on behalf of us all, we wish you all a wonderful rest of your evening. And, you know, just for the record, it is 4:51. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you so much, everyone.